Ready to do this?
Okay, calling our first. Well, this is a special council meeting that we're starting with. Calling our meeting to order Tuesday, November 3rd. Attendance at the beginning of the meeting is five in chambers and I see Council Hughes, Council Jolly on Zoom. So 100%. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Council Mackay, thank you.
I just move that the agenda from November 3rd special council meeting be adopted as presented.
Thank you. All those in favor? Voting's closed. I'm assuming that's unanimous. Yes, it is. All right. Who wants to read the big, long deliberation process motion? Who's got water? Jackie looked at me first. Page three. And it's in your granica screen. Number one, that section 11.5 of the procedure bylaw 32018 be suspended for the 2021 budget process to allow the reordering of agenda items and the addition of information as required without formally amending the agenda. Number two, that section 12.8, the procedure bylaw be suspended for the 2021 budget process to allow the mayor to make motions without relinquishing the chair. Number three, that section 17.1 of the procedure bylaw be suspended for the 2021 budget process to allow the mover of a motion to move an amendment to the same motion. Number four, that consideration of proposed amendments to the proposed 2021 operating and capital budgets made during presentations be automatically postponed without need of a motion to that effect until all presentations have been completed. Number five, that council and committee of the whole be authorized to direct administration by resolution to make changes to the proposed 2021 operating and capital budgets. Number six, that the budget information requests and postpone motions received to date set out as the attachment to the report dated November 3rd, 2020 and entitled 2021 budget deliberation process are hereby accepted as presented and deemed fully a part of the 2020 budget deliberation process as though they were read verbatim into the record. And number seven, that council move into committee of the whole. Excellent. Thank you, Council Hansen. Council Watkins, do you have a question? Can I just remove you? Okay, all right. Any questions on this, anyone? All right, accept that motion, Council Hansen. Any opening arguments?
No arguments, just from a procedural point of view. It relaxes our rules, helps us move through budget more easily with a little bit more free flow and probably ends up being a little bit more efficient in terms of getting to the end goal.
All right, call for the vote. Voting's closed. That's unanimous. All right, we're now in committee of the whole. Next thing on our agenda is public input. Mr. Scobal, how will we be taking public input over this process? Anything different? It's always at the beginning of the meetings. Public and register.
Yes, I believe so. I'm going to defer to our CLO for anything that's new this year, of course, with the pandemic.
Yeah, what we're suggesting is that although the public be given the opportunity today, which you've just done and on Thursday of this week as well, realistically, the budget has just been made public yesterday. The real important date for the public to be able to make presentations to committee of the whole, if they so choose, will be the 24th. That's a scheduled session of this very meeting, which will be in recess until then, at least after Thursday. So what I'm going to suggest, and if you don't need a motion, if council members are okay, we will just, as ledge services, we will put the notice on the public website and in the Gazette that the 24th, anyone is invited to register and make any submissions they care to make about the budget or the budget process.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, so we have no public input for today, so we're going to move on to number five, the overview and presentations. So we're starting with general government and corporate financing.
Karen, can I ask one question first?
Absolutely.
It's actually going forward. The library board and the A H F, have they been told to? I'm asking not you, but anyone who could answer. Have they been told to email us a copy of theirs? Because typically they would give us a paper copy, but two of us aren't there. So I'm just wondering if we're going to also have the opportunity to get that at the time that they're presenting. I know it's at 5 o'clock, so I just wanted to make sure that we would actually get it.
Through Council Hughes, through to the mayor, we will make contact with those organizations to get paper copy or get electronic copies to be able to provide to those.
I'm not sure if we're even bringing anything in. They might not.
Yeah. They typically do bring in something on paper, and so that's why I just want to make sure that Council Jolly and I aren't excluded from getting that information, I guess, in time.
Council Hansen, did you have something to add?
I actually do have a copy of their presentation, mostly just because I'm on the board and it was sent out to board members, so I'm happy to forward that on to you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. General government and corporate finance.
Yes, I'll be giving that presentation. Just get my screen up here. All right, so kicking things off here, you know, it is my pleasure to present the financial plan and 2021 budget for council, executive leadership and general government. Of course, council is the city's governing body, providing high-level direction in developing corporate strategy and related policies, ensuring municipal powers are exercised appropriately and ensuring municipal duties and functions are fulfilled. Executive leadership provides direct advice to council and corporate leadership on all aspects of the municipal corporation, including supporting council and their governance role. This function funds the offices of the chief administrative officer and the deputy chief administrative officer. This function also acts as a liaison to St. Albert Public Library. The general government functional area provides strategic guidance, planning, advice and resources to council and the corporation to support the city's initiatives and in the future for the benefit of St. Albert. The following departments are funded through this function, so legal and legislative services, economic development, financial services and assessment, human resources and safety, and finally, strategic services and information technology. So further into this presentation, we'll also talk about corporate financing, which includes the portion of the tax levy used to support required debt payments, provides contributions to the municipal capital reserves and projects, and also includes common corporate revenues and expenses such as interest, income, bank fees and lease expenses. I'm sorry, it looks like I got to hit a slide there already. So council reapproved the strategic priorities early in 2020. Administration has developed a proposed budget that prioritizes services and service levels, supports growth to move council strategic plan forward, and maintains and plans for key infrastructure projects to support our recovery. So as discussed in the proposed budget, which was presented yesterday, administration is proposing a 1.1% municipal property tax increase. This increase relates to maintaining service levels not directly related by COVID and includes the 1.5% increase in infrastructure funding. So through these functional presentations, you'll see that administration has limited our new spending request to address only the most vital of projects. Departments were instructed to identify savings within their operating budget and bring forward new business cases, including new employee requests only if required to meet immediate safety concerns, meet regulatory requirements, or the justified opportunities to generate new revenue. So now we'll start discussing the council, executive leadership and general government functions and the net change for each. So this slide shows the overall impact for the 2021 proposed budget as compared to the 2020 revised budget for council and for executive leadership. So for council, we'll have a minimal change from the prior year due to one-time funding for the inner-city forum and decreases in special events and 2020 grants for savings of $1,000. For executive leadership, the net impact is a decrease of $480,000, and this is a result of a decrease in conditional grants due to one-time municipal internship funding for $43,000 and a decrease in transfers due to one-time funding for the service level review $1,007,000. On the expense side, there's a decrease in salaries, wages and benefits due to allocation of the vacant pool, employee pool, 189,000, and a decrease in contracted and general expenses due to the service level review and municipal internship of $1,048,000. And finally, a decrease in transfer to reserves due to one-time transfer of library savings to mitigate the impact of, financial impact of COVID for $313,000. So switching now to general government, there's a net impact increase of $324,000 in this category, which is mainly due to, on the revenue side, a decrease in business licenses to align with historical and anticipated sales, offset by an increase to sales and user fees for $32,000, a decrease in transfers from reserve due to one-time litigation expense offset partially by 2021 election costs for $124,000. On the expense side, there's an increase in materials, goods and supplies due to reallocation of expenses from contracted and general services for $136,000, increased cost for corporate software licensing, but a decrease in contracted and general services due to reduction in learning and development, printing to mitigate the financial impact of COVID-19, and a one-time litigation expense offset by reallocation of expenses to materials, goods and supplies for $616,000. So general government services is proposing one business case geared toward maintaining service levels, and that's municipal enforcement office e-ticketing. The Alberta Government's Lister Generals Office has mandated that all peace officer agencies that issue Traffic Safety Act tickets implement e-ticketing by the fall of 2021. This business case allows us to upgrade our seven vehicles with that technology. There is also one request to change or optimize service levels, and that's COSA corporate promotion, and that is to create a budget to develop the necessary marketing materials to support council, executive leadership, economic development and intergovernmental relations. So resources are required to assist these groups in conducting negotiations and promotions of St. Albert with the business, development, government sectors to improve the city's investment and growth opportunities. The net change in the corporate financing function, so this function includes the portion of the tax levy used to support required debt payments, provides contributions to municipal capital reserve and projects, and also includes corporate, common corporate revenues and expenses such as interest, income, bank fees and lease expenses. So this slide shows the overall impact for 2021 compared to 2020. The net impact is an increase of $849,000, and this is mainly due to an increase on the revenue side of assessment growth revenue, which was applied to the base of $550,000, a decrease in sales and utility fee or user fees from the utility administration fee based on projected corporate assumptions of $124,000, an increase in franchise fees due to the increase of the local access fee of $899,000, a decrease in interest income based on rates and investment base of $900,000, and an increase in other revenue due to one-time funding for 5G installation of $97,000, and an increase in transfer from reserves to fund debt payments on North St. Albert Trail for $302,000. On the expense side, there's a decrease in bank and short-term interest rates and forecast reserves and deferred revenue balances of $540,000, an increase in other expenses for corporate contingency of $516,000, which includes union and cost of living adjustments, an increase in transfer to reserves due to approved 1.5% increase for the infrastructure funding strategy, which, the dollar value of which is 1.6 million, an increase in principal repayments related to new debt of $745,000, a decrease in contracted and general services due to reallocation of leases to the public works department for $591,000, and a decrease in transfer from operating because we transferred the 2020 approved grant programs to reserve to mitigate the financial impact of COVID for $137,000. So in summary, for 2021, the council function will essentially be balanced, and the executive leadership function will have an overall net decrease of $480,000. This is mainly the result of a decrease in transfers due to one-time 2020 funding for the service level review of $1,037,000. The general government function will have a net impact increase of $324,000. Key influencers are primarily related to a decrease in business licenses to align with historical and anticipated sales and increasing software licensing costs. And finally, the corporate financing function will have a net impact increase of $849,000, which is primarily the result of the 1.5% increase to the infrastructure funding strategy. So this concludes our presentation for general government.
Okay. So questions now of finance department. Kevin, let's try to keep it with corporate and general government. I'm going to start real quick, probably for Diane. I'm assuming Diane's here. There she is.
Sorry, Mayor, before, would you like me to stop sharing my screen or leave?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, no, I think we're good. Thanks. Diane, you might as well keep your camera on the whole meeting. Can we go to page 39 of our document, which is the financial summaries? That's it? Yeah. So a little curious about the interest income and why it's dropped so much?
Yeah, so the main reason actually is just that, you know, interest rates have actually been falling a fair bit, especially through COVID, and we've had some of our investments come due, and we've had to reinvest them at lower rates. And then it's also to, just based on our available funding that we have to invest. So there's been, you know, a small change in the base as well, but it's mostly driven by reduction in interest rates.
Yeah, that was a significant drop, 900,000?
Yeah. We've had actually quite large pickups in the last several years, and this is the first year that it's kind of gone back down again.
Okay. And then we had 2 million in projected new assessment. I think that was said yesterday, correct?
That's correct.
So that means, according to policy, we would take 600,000 and put it towards the base, and the remaining 1.4 is to fund new projects, correct?
Right, right. So in essence, what we've did this year is we put the 600,000 against the base as per policy. Our operating business cases that we put forward to be funded from assessment growth were about 800,000, I think, leaving the 524 remaining. So as norm, like per policy, we would be putting that to the growth stabilization reserve, but administration, as part of our recommendation to, that got us down to the 1.1 was to actually take that extra assessment growth and also apply it against the base.
Okay. So on page 39, I see the 600,000 under assessment growth revenue under the revenue column. And then down under municipal requirement, there's 856, which is the business cases. And then the 600,000 is there again. I'm just wondering how that works and then?
Yeah, it's just confusing as to how we have to show it because it truly, assessment growth doesn't, and I know Mr. Dolan always has a challenge with this, because it doesn't really, it doesn't become revenue unless we actually assess it. So it has to become part of our assessment base, but it doesn't become part of the tax requirement. So we add it in so that we can show that we've applied the 600,000 against the base, but then for the tax requirement, we have to back that piece out again so that we're not over levying. So it's a bit of a confusing thing, but to get the proper levy of the, ultimately of the 112 at the bottom, we have to, we have to show that in there twice.
Okay. And so you've made the decision to take, so it's against policy then to take that 544 and put it towards the base?
That's correct. So that's, it's an administrative recommendation, but that's obviously council.
Right, but that's what's in the budget.
That's what's in the budget.
Yeah, okay. So didn't we do this last year?
I'd have to go back and look to see if we had any residual and what we did with it.
Okay.
I can certainly go back and take a look.
And the only reason I'm asking is if we're going to do this continually year over year, then why do we have policy? So if I could get that as a B I R, what was done with the residual growth balance in 2020 budget that would help maybe make policy decisions next year?
Yeah, certainly any year prior to 2020. I'll go back and look specifically for 2020 because it may have, you know, because of COVID, we may have made a different recommendation, but every year prior to that, I know for sure, we did transfer it to the reserve.
Awesome. Okay, and then part of that B I R, can you just give us a balance of that reserve?
Yep.
Thanks. And I was thinking about the grants, where is it? We, I mean, we get provincial grant money, so I'm just wondering what we put in that column. Are we going on what we traditionally have got, or did we reduce it because of the current situation? Did we make a guess at what we might get in M S I, et cetera?
So the M S I and those capital grants wouldn't be showing on this operating side?
Or just in general?
Yeah, so what we've done for the capital is, is we sort of estimate what our anticipated next 10 years of funding is. And so as you know, M S I is coming to a close and will be transitioning to the local government fiscal framework. We still don't have any real details on that program, but the province did put out, when they announced it, they put out a bit of a formula for municipalities to be able to provide themselves with a reasonable estimate of what they could expect under that new program. So that's what we have used in our capital funding estimates.
Okay.
And based our recommendations on that.
Was it kind of pre-COVID?
It was. So there's definitely risk that when the details actually come out, that, you know, the amounts could potentially be less. So it's definitely a risk that we're facing. We'll probably know more in February when the province releases its budget.
Okay. And while I have you, I'm going to ask one quick question, and then I'm going to go to Council Hansen. We have the proposed operating projects, and one of them you have recommended, Kevin or Diane, is the I D P. But I'm wondering why we're considering that on operating and not capital, because, you know, like the Lakeview business thing, area structure plan is a capital project. And I'm wondering, Diane, this question, do you, how do you determine if it's operating or capital? And could it be funded from the capital reserve instead?
Yeah, Mr. Scobal, if that's okay, I can sort of address that. So that's one of the interesting things that, and that we had talked about at committee when we were talking about some of our, the ways that we fund capital, and that was one of the issues that we had brought up, because in general, like technically, all of the, any plan, whether it's an I D P or an area structure plan or any of those kinds of things, they truly are not capital because they do not actually result, even result in a capital project at the end of the day. So they truly are not capital, but we have traditionally or sometimes funded them through capital just because they're one-time in nature. And so sometimes it's easier to fund them through, through the one-time capital dollars rather than putting them through operating. But in this case where we're using assessment growth revenue to fund it, it's, it's not as big of an impact. So we, we could do it from both, although of course we are very short on our capital dollars as well. You know, and the risks we face on that side. So it, it, it definitely could be flipped over and funded from the, from the capital reserve. If that was a desire of council.
But looked at the breakdown and money we have available for capital. So we've used up every last penny in our capital is funding for, not reserve, but our funding for this year. So.
Uh, well, no, what we haven't, no, we haven't. So what we've done is we've actually tried to take a bit of a longer term approach when we were, when we were recommending capital projects. So we were looking at what our available funding is over about the next five years. And then looking at all the projects that are sort of coming up. And so we tried to balance so that we wouldn't sort of spend all our money in year one and then have very, very limited dollars in, you know, years two, three and four. So we did kind of balance, balance that out. So we have money that we have not allocated that we technically have access to right now, but we have not allocated it so that we can sort of be able to spread out the capital dollars over several years.
Okay. So if I felt like it, I could make a motion to say fund the IDP from the capital reserve and then that 160,000 could be then applied to the tax base.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have anyone from? Is Greg Dolan still around? Or is anyone from tax and assessment?
Probably not on the line right now.
Okay. Normally I traditionally ask Greg, are we in a, a lock or a push here? Do you know?
Uh, I'm not 100% sure, but I know generally we usually want to wait until after the end of the year until we've actually finalized our assessment growth. So at this point, the amount that we've got in there, the 2 million is an estimate at this point. And of course we'll finalize that at the end of the year, but we could, you could, we could take that as a BIR as well to see at least where it's trending, what it's looking like.
Think we usually get that. So if I don't mind, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Jackie.
I just had a question about the e-ticketing new business case. Is this, it feel like, I feel like it's a little bit of a download because we don't really have a choice to upgrade this. And so are all municipalities being faced with this upgrading? Or at least maybe even having to implement for some municipalities? I guess that's to you, Erin.
Yeah, so it is every single municipality that has peace officers that are going to be required to do this. So it's a, it's an efficiency that the province of, an initiative that the province of Alberta is, is bringing forward to create efficiencies in their court system so that they don't have to manually enter tickets anymore. That it all just happens through a new ticketing platform.
But there's been no assistance in, in getting this seven running or has there from other levels of, or from the province?
No, there's no, there's no grant funding or any other funding for, for peace officers specifically.
So would this, does this, at the end of the day, I mean, it gets good to move into the 21st century for all of this, but does it actually save us some dollars in the long run?
I think eventually it will in, in that we may not have to increase support services locally at the detachment. So as we move more towards e-ticketing platforms, we, we arguably have less need within the detachment to do some manually entry, entries as well. It'll probably get filled up with, with other new work that's coming on board. But I think eventually moving towards these kinds of initiatives will, will help us. But there's nothing immediate in terms of cost savings.
Okay. And last question, I think I read that there is going to be a little bit of training costs involved with, with this in, in the long term for operating this. Is that correct? Did I read that right?
Sorry, Counselor, I missed that. Did you say training costs?
Yeah, there, is there some training costs in, in maintenance of, of training for e-ticketing at all?
I, I don't know that there's anything significant in training costs. We're going to have some training for the officers on how to use the system and new officers coming on board, but that's no different than other operating systems we use. And there may be some initial training and familiarity that the IT department needs to understand in, in supporting and maintaining a program. But I don't think it's anything significant.
But bottom line, this comes to us, we don't have a choice, so it's not really debatable. In a way. Because you would need to be up to, to speed with, with what the province is doing.
Yes. So I guess as a municipality, our choice is whether or not we want to have our peace officers issue Traffic Safety Act violations. So if, if we want them to issue Traffic Safety Act violations, we, we're mandated to go to an e-ticketing platform. If, if we don't want them to do that, then, then we don't have to purchase the system. But then if we do that, there will be a loss in fine revenue.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Mackay.
Thanks. You picked up on one of my questions, Counselor Hanson. I think that there's going to be eventually efficiencies, obviously, because the volume of physical summons rating, there's always rework. And there's always probably costs in relation to buying or getting the actual tickets themselves. And so you don't, you save on that. But I guess my question relates to it is the $15,000 ongoing licensing fee potentially? Or there's a licensing fee. So do we have to pay for a licensing fee every year or would it be better to pay $15,000 this year and included in IT's budget? Or how does that work, Erin?
I can answer that, Erin, if you want. So basically what happens with, through the chair to Counselor Mackay, this is Sharon Chapman talking. Basically, the 15,000 would be asked for on an ongoing basis and would be included in the IT budget moving forward. So the 50,000 includes this first year's licensing fees. And then there would be a $15,000 addition in licensing fees moving forward.
All right. So, okay, well, that, I mean, because I see it's only potentially added on, so that would be actually a $65,000 ask. And then next year would be, or would you put 15 right on?
The 15,000 is included in the 50,000 for this year, but then the 15,000 additional would be moving forward and would be need to be included in the base IT licensing budget.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I wasn't too sure on that because it was a little addendum, but thank you very much. On the COSAP Corporate Promotion, the 50,000, the recommended, is that, is there any duplication with what active is doing? Or is that part of active element? Or is that going to be a standalone?
No, it's, it's assisting active and all the other departments, Counselor Mackay. So what we're hoping to do is to be able to look at promotion of the corporation across all departments. So some of it would be used by active. Some of it would be used by government relations. We're hoping to develop packages that if council is meeting with other jurisdictions and with, for executive leadership as well. So it's basically what we've done is basically looked at it from a centralized perspective as opposed to economic development, which is looking at it just from the perspective of their department. So that's what the resources are for. And basically what we've done is we, in, in communications and design, we don't have any marketing dollars for centrally promoting the corporation overall. We did reduce our base budget for advertising with the Gazette this year because we were able to find efficiencies, but we did reduce that from the base budget as opposed to just allocating it to this without council's input. So we are looking to basically use that as central money moving forward to promote the corporation overall.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Ms. McMorty, on the fines and penalties. You know, we're at 4,020,000 for last year and, and there's just potentially a slight increase for 025. Are we confident that, that, is that just a, a guess? So is the, or is, I guess that you're going off an actual, you're anticipating a modest increase then in fines and penalties?
Actually, could you tell me what page of the budget document you're referring to?
Yeah. So if you go back to revenues and you got fines and penalties and for 2021, there's a 4025 for 2021. So a modest increase of 5,000 over last year.
Yeah. So we're not, we're not really anticipating much changes in our, in our fines and penalties.
Have we seen anything in the first little bit of, or are we, have we, are we optimistic there, Erin, or Mr. Hiltz? Are, are, how are we doing with our enforcement?
I can take a stab at that. It's, this is definitely a challenging one for us to estimate, estimate and predict for next year, especially with what occurred this year with COVID and some of the decreases that we saw. So, you know, it's, it's, when we look at fine revenue, generally speaking, and, and trying to give a budget on it, we look at a three-year trend unless we see some kind of, you know, significant impacts. And this is definitely one of them that occurred. So the, the trending that we're, we're, we're hoping for it to happen next year is, is that it's going to start to be brought back up to, to a normal average. Now, the unknown is, 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 you know, the continued pandemic and how that's going to impact the way the police services issue tickets and the number of tickets that get issued. So it is, it's, it's a hard one to nail down and I, and, you know, I think we're, I think it's achievable, but there is risk that it, it'll be lower.
So, and this probably may become when emergency services presents or is policing involved with that? I don't know. I'm, I'm just guessing. But what's our photo enforcement revenue projected to be?
I'll take a, maybe what I can do is take a look at my documents and prepare for that when emergency services come up. I know I have it here in my, my notes.
Either that or I can put it in as a BIR, Erin. It's fine. I can do either.
Yeah, that might be best. And then we can also articulate all the fine revenue in, in those categories.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks. Ms. McMorty, just going back to the question that Mayor Herron asked in relation to the assessment and, and the way it's demonstrated on the residual growth balance is the 544. So is it, because we're changing policy, is that number 544 part of that formula? Or is it, that number, can it be altered? Can we move it up or down?
No. So, so basically we have total assessment revenue of $2 million. Policy says the first 30% automatically goes against the base to offset for current taxpayers. The remaining 70% is available for growth business cases. If we don't use it all for growth business cases, and this year, of course, we only have 856,000 that we're requesting for growth business pays cases. Any residual amount that's left over, policy says that it goes to the growth stabilization reserve, which can be used to offset taxes in future years. And we just, we just thought this year, you know, we should use it to offset taxes in the current year. You know, obviously due to the pandemic and stuff, that it would be appropriate to use it this year rather than hold it for a future year.
Okay. So the 544 is the number. We can't move it up or down.
So the, no, the only thing that will, the only thing that will, I guess the only thing that would change that number is that if council did not approve one of the proposed business cases, because they're already considered funded in the budget. If you, if you unfunded one of those business cases, then that amount would go up.
Yeah.
Or if we funded, if we funded one of the two, then it would go down. Right?
Right.
Yes, thanks. I, I just appreciate the clarification for that purposes. And I guess I can put this in as a BIR. Did you ask how much we have in the capital reserve?
I put it in as BIR.
Okay, it's already been put in. All right, thank you. That's all my questions.
All right, Counselor Jolly, do you have any questions? No? Okay, Counselor Hughes?
You asked everything I had, but it's okay. So I, I just, you don't, you don't have that capital reserve though, Diane? Hey, off the top of your head, you don't have how much is in the capital reserve? It's up over.
I think, I think what I would ask if I could do for council, if I could put together a bit of a summary chart of all of our capital funding sources and what we have estimated over the next four or five years, because it'll give you more of a complete picture rather than just giving you the number in one particular reserve. So I think we'll do a bit of a chart for you that'll give you a sense of where we're at.
Yeah, that would help us. And then perhaps it'll make us want to spend less money this year once we see what else is coming up in the future years. Okay. Also, when you do the chart, are you planning to, like, because I know that there's the wish list and then there's like the absolutely we need to fund list, which what's what we have today is the absolutely need to fund list in many cases. Are you planning to do, I'm gonna guess, I don't know how you can do it, but because the wish list can make it seem quite daunting versus what we need to fund versus not need to fund. I know you always have made the decision about what's above and below the line, but if there's some way you can get some kind of perspective on that as well, like this is absolutely necessary or something of this caliber. Just because obviously the wish list looks huge and so there's going to be a lot of no's. You know what I mean?
Yep. So what we, what we actually have already kind of put together for the next five years is sort of, you know, based on our prioritization matrix without understanding maybe other thing, other factors that may come into it, that the projects that would be on that funded list for the next five years based on the prioritization matrix. So it would give you an idea of what those projects would potentially look like. But obviously every year council has the ability to, to change that and modify our recommendations, but we can provide something similar to that.
All right, you're already on top of everything. Thank you so much. That's it.
All right. What did we say? We're transferring out of reserves for the election this year? 120, is that here? Does anyone know?
Mr. Scobal might have had that in his speaking notes. I think he's just looking it up.
Take it down to zero and do an online.
We, we may have to look. I think.
That's okay. I thought you said it in your presentation. I just missed.
No, I think I just have a net though. I said a decrease in transfers from reserve due, due to one-time litigation expense offset partially by 2021 election costs. And the net on that looks like it's 124.
It's not, it's not a huge deal. I just kind of, I just kind of wonder what we budget for the election.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look it up for you.
Okay, page 51 of the budget document. Diane, I think this one's for you. I think that's the, or no, maybe it's page 50. Shows the graph of how we're doing with capital. RMR growth in the little line. And, you know, in past years, the available funding line dipped below into the dark blue, which is RMR. It's not dipping below, so I guess that's good news. Still doesn't leave a lot for growth. But is this graph prepared with the assumption of the 1.5 going in this year? And I think next year would be the last year and then we don't have any funding. So I'm just wondering how you're taking the available funding, how you're calculating that? Are you assuming it's gone forever?
So you're correct because we do have the 1.5 built in for 21 and 22, based on the council motion as part of our funding. And the reason that you see the funding kind of go up in those future years is just because the, the RMR requirements in those years would have us pulling more money out of the reserve. So we have money in, sitting in some specific reserves. And obviously we would pull the amount of money out that we needed that year to fund projects within that category. So that's why it looks like the funding is going up, but it's basically, it's not the money necessarily that we're adding each year. It's the money that we're, that we've saved in the past that we're now pulling out of reserve to help fund those.
Those projects. I mean, the, the basis of us approving the 1.5% RMR was because that line dipped into, we didn't have enough RMR. If we have enough for RMR, then do we need the 1.5 levy?
Well, so, so remember the argument though is, is that a lot of that funding line is grants, right? So, so the majority of what's funding RMR right now is grants. And we want to get to the point where we're self-funding our RMR so that if our grants go down, we're not at risk.
Okay. And our grants are going to go down. I'm not, I just, I was just wondering what the assumptions were in the graph. We can talk about the policy of that. Probably the next council will have to make that decision. Right? Which will be first, in the first two seconds of their term. It's a big decision. All right. Anyone else have any questions on general government or corporate finance? Oh, that was fast. Okay. All right, who's next?
We're going with the Community and Recreation Services next. Mr. Hiltz is going to speak tonight.
Okay. Turn the speakers off and the mic off.
My apologies. I should know how to operate this by now. Okay. So it's my pleasure to present the Community and Recreation Services plan and budget for you today. Community and Recreation Service Function Area provides external services in the areas of culture, community and social development, as well as recreation and parks. The function also acts as a liaison for local boards and outside agencies such as Arts and Heritage Foundation. The function also acts as liaison for local boards and outside agencies such as Arts and Heritage Foundation, St. Albert Senior Center, Community Services Advisory Board, and the Affordable Housing Advisory Board in cooperation with the Planning Department. Community Services and Recreation and Parks are two of the departments funded through this function. This slide shows the overall impact for the 2021 projected budget as compared to the 2020 revised budget. The net impact is an increase of $954,000 and mainly a result of revenues, a decrease in sales and user fees due to a re, reduced volume from COVID-19 with corresponding decrease in expenses, $3,090,000. A decrease in rental due to reduced volume from COVID-19, corresponding decrease in expenses, $603,000. A decrease in the other revenue due to reduction in sponsorship due to COVID-19, $230,000. A decrease in transfer from reserves due to a one-time funding for projects such as Red Willow Park West, Stephen Barr Memorial Sculptures, repainting Alberta Green Elevators non-2021, $258,000. Our expenses, a decrease in salaries and wages due to reduction in casual wages due to reduced volume from COVID-19, $3,090,000. A decrease in contract and general services due to reduced volume in COVID-19, $554,000. A decrease in materials, goods, supplies, utilities due to reduced volume from COVID-19, $511,000. A decrease in transfers to and from reserves due to one-time reserve transfers not budgeted in 2021, and a reduction in refurbishment reserve transfers due to lower rentals and performances from COVID-19, $299,000. A decrease in transfers from operations due to reduction internal transfers to reflect moving building maintenance from public works in transit to recreation parks, $338,000. Community and Recreation Services proposing one business case geared towards maintaining service levels. The Red Willow Park Meadowview Construction Charter involves construction of a new park amenities and trail connections in the Meadowview area. To clarify, Meadowview encompasses the area between Riggivens Drive and the Tressle Bridge, including Gray Nun's White Spruce Park on the north side of the Sturgeon River. We are requesting $12,700 to support corporate business plan implementation. The business case is for the installation of two additional flagpoles at St. Albert Place and to have maintained treaty six flags permanently flying. This would meet the standards of Council Policy C, CAO 19 Flag Display, and begin to address recommendation 10 and 13 from the Heon Reconciliation Report without considerable changes to operations at St. Albert Place and minimal operational impacts. As a change or operation to service levels, Community and Recreation Service proposes $500,000 for community amenities site planning is to fund the conceptual plan for community amenities site, including identification of facility components, site concept, plan development, and public engagement. Council's request to the administration provide business cases for two initiatives. They are, first one, Aitkinsdale Pickleball Court Sound Study for $10,000 to address noise complaints emulating from the court since 2019, and a social housing coordinator, whose role will be to advance social housing supports for all vulnerable groups in St. Albert and the youth supportive housing capital project as per the recommendations of the mayor's task force on homelessness. This will require $82,000 for the role and $115,000 for the capital project in 2021. The capital project is not on the 10-year growth plan, but available on the council website. In summary, for 2021, Community and Recreation Services is proposing an overall net increase of just under $1 million. The key influences is really the pandemic and the COVID-related decrease in revenues along with corresponding increases in expenses. This concludes the presentation for Community and Recreation Services.
Thank you. So any questions on CSD, culture, or recreation now? Is that right?
Yes.
That's kind of the bubble? Okay, Counsel McKay.
All right, thanks. Um, Mr. Hiltz or one of your staff, on the Red Willow Park Meadowview Construction, um, the 2021, what would occur? It says in phase one, it's $3,155,900. Is it still ongoing consultation, or is there actually some construction planned?
Thank you, Counsel McKay. I'll refer this question to, uh, Diane Inger, Director of Recreation and Parks.
Which, um, project is that?
The, uh, the Meadowview Construction, it's on page 118.
I'm sorry, what number is it?
It is, uh, rec 050.
Thank you.
So thanks for the question. And, um, so the work that will happen on Red Willow Park West Meadowview is the construction of Gray Nun's White Spruce Park in 2021. So that will be the trails, it will be the picnic areas, it will be the full development of that new city park, um, which buffers Riverside and, um, our Sturgeon River corridor. It will not be the trail that goes along, um, the river to the Tressle Bridge. It will just be the Red Willow, or the Gray Nun's White Spruce Park construction at this point.
Does it then tie into Riverside as that new, that construction progresses? Or does, is Riverside also anticipated to be going this year too, along with GenStar?
So the Gray Nun's White Spruce Park definitely integrates with the Riverside neighborhood. Um, we've worked very closely with the ASP and the park master planning in Riverside to align it to Gray Nun's White Spruce Park with connectors and trail connections, those kinds of things. Um, we are working very closely, um, with the developer on their park as, as their development progresses, on our park development. But this, this charter specifically is for the development of Gray Nun's White Spruce Park.
And then it moves into 2023, and that just continues it on through then? What's, what's?
Yes. So 2023 is a trail connection between Gray Nun's White Spruce Park and, um, along the river to connect to the existing trail on the east side of the Tressle Bridge, on the north side of the river.
Thank you. And that's all, all the consultation has been part of the Red Willow Master Plan, correct? Wasn't that all? It's all, may, mostly been done, right? Correct?
So yes, the consultation has been completed on, well, um, through to detailed design on Gray Nun's White Spruce Park as well as the trail connection.
Okay, and while I have you, I'm gonna, I have to ask the, I'm sure you were ready for this question, the sound study. The $10,000 is for one day sound study, one day only?
So the, um, the charter incorporates a full sound study. So they would come out and do sound testing for a full day. Um, but it would also include detailed report and analysis of the sound and the impact, um, that the, um, the, uh, the sound panels would have against the sound of the pickleball court.
So I mean, I, I'm not going to get into the weeds too much, but I mean, I can just foresee all sorts of potential challenges with that. Because I mean, if you go on, for example, you go on a day there's a tournament and it's non-stop versus a day just normal use. I mean, the, I mean, I, I'm just wondering whether or not we could have, what was the amount, um, that we were looking at? It was $98,000 initially for the whole sound attenuation barrier. Um, and then I think we went out and got some additional, um, quotes for a potential, something that would be about $30,000? Is that correct, or am I making that last number up in my head?
So two parts to that question. The first part in regard to the actual day of testing, we would ensure that, uh, the court was in full, um, utilization so that it, we could test it at various times of the day based on, um, utilization of all full courts of all utilization. So we'll, we would manage that to make sure that we are getting good results. Um, with regard to the acoustic panels, yes, it's, um, I believe it was 97,000 was the, the cost of that project. Um, we didn't have an alternative. Um, so the 97,000 is reinforced in defense and the acoustic panels. Um, and we'd broken that down. I think 30,000 was the acoustic panels. Um, but there's all the other work that has to, that is required along with securing that panel to the fence.
Yeah, Counsel McKay and to rest of councils, there was, uh, some alternatives that were suggested, and those alternatives were to look at half. And they were in the 50 to $60,000 range. So it was 97 to do the full, and half of that would be around 60.
All right, um, so I mean, basically if we approve this, we're looking at another year basically to do the study, hire the consultant, do the study. And so we're looking for another complete year before we come back with potentially another project. Now, I'm, I think Counsel Hughes, didn't you have in a budget, a postponed motion around additional dollars towards this, or is this part of that?
No, I didn't put anything forward yet, because I just started going to budget now. So there's no postponed motion on the books at this point.
Yeah, I was looking for it earlier and I didn't see it, and I just thought, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, no, you could put one forward too, though. But no, nothing, nothing as of yet. Um, I was just waiting to see what came forward with the budget in general.
Okay, um, okay, thanks for the additional information. I appreciate it. That's all my questions.
Um, along the lines of, oh, that rec 050, the Meadowview. Diane, I'm so excited to see it actually going forward, finally connecting, you know, a missing piece of our trail system. But that leads me to another missing piece of our trail system, Oakmont. So there is an unfunded, um, capital plan for 298 Oakmont Trail Phase 2. I assume that means connecting from Boudreaux to the pedestrian bridge? And that's just design work?
Correct. So that is a project charter, um, that actually is in several phases. So there's three phases of work as part of that charter. The first phase, though, of course, is just the, um, uh, study part and doing the geotech that's required. Currently, though, that project charter is sitting unfunded.
Okay.
It's not proposed to be part of the funding for 21.
And was there, I mean, I know there's the, the, the matrix and the prioritization. I, I just, I'm wondering if there's, if there's something that we don't know that didn't push it over the funded line, is it? Because I think that's an important project, connecting the trails. Is it because it's just going to be so technically difficult, or is it because worried about, you know, the, the riverbank development, or are we worried about Oakmont residents? Like, what's not pushing it up over the line?
The charter itself and the work itself is very technical and, um, is important work. I agree in terms of our trail connections. However, I think it all came down to just, uh, funding and, um, amount of funds we had available and the prioritization. And maybe, uh, I don't know, Diane, Morty, would you like to speak to the prioritization of how the project charters made the, the funding cut?
Yeah, I mean, this year, actually, for the most part, we pretty, other than, you know, a couple of, uh, small ones like the flagpoles, um, you know, we pretty much went with the prioritization, um, in terms of, of how it came out. And it really, like you said, you know, about pushing it above the line, it was just the fact that the line was very high up this year. Um, you know, and looking at our funding over the next three or four years, or just, you know, we also thought that, you know, we put forward this, this big one. For the, this one, we were just talking about rec 050, um, you know, which was a lot of money to put into, into, into park, a park project. So we just didn't feel like we wanted to put in another park project forward. And I believe there was other ones higher on the list than the one you're referring to, too. So if we wanted to bring another one up, it probably wouldn't have been that one.
No, but this is where we get political, right?
Yep.
Um, because you also have a recommended municipal growth capital project of public art for 230,000. Is that, is that the policy, is that the dollars we have set aside in policy that I just put forward a motion to, to not do this year?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
If we pass that motion, does it free up some capital money to do the Oakmont Trail?
No, because your motion would then be taking that money and actually putting it against the tax base.
Darn it. Trying to find, I want that trail. But okay, I'm going to go to Jackie now.
Thank you. Um, I just had some questions around the, um, social housing specialist. So, uh, it's, it's for a full-time equivalent, uh, at, at a salary of 82,000. Would that be correct?
So, so I will just add, so the, the salary that would be shown in 2021 would be nine months' worth of the salary. Um, we have, do have policy under budget guiding principles that says that we basically cost our first year salaries with an April 1st start. Because by the time council approves the budget, we hire the position. So that's basically nine months' worth of the position. And then the following year, you, you kind of see the full, the full impact of the position.
Yeah, I think I asked that, I think I, I ask that question every single year. So in terms of, is this administrative? Is this somebody with, uh, a, um, uh, some kind of a social, a counseling background, or, um, I'm just trying to understand it a little bit more. I know it's not Lori's position, because she kind of deals out of planning. This is, this is new for us. So I just wondering around the background, um, for this work. Do we know?
Yes, I'll let Katrina, um, answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so through Madam Mayor, this position, so if we think of, of the position that Lori has, the affordable housing liaison as really being about creating the bricks and mortar, uh, and working with development to, to create, um, a range of housing. This one would be more around how you fill those bricks and mortar. Um, so they would need a social background. But they wouldn't be doing direct client work. It would be more around that community development approach to, um, ensuring that they identify who the vulnerable groups are and work across the sector. Work across departments to ensure that, that those needs are being addressed. Um, looking for partnerships to, uh, potentially operate different, uh, facilities. So really about that social lens of affordable housing, or sorry, social housing.
So, um, I know, uh, Katrina, you've been part of our recovery task force, um, conversations, and we talk about hub work, and we talk about, uh, bringing our partners together, um, and, and housing as well. Would you anticipate that this position would touch all, all of that kind of work?
It would certainly touch all of the work around homelessness and housing, certainly.
Okay, thank you so much.
Make a motion, Jackie, make a motion.
I'm going to turn to, uh, Counsel Jolly. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. So for the Oakmont Trail Charter that's currently unfunded, uh, I'm curious to know why we're expecting that to take four to five years, some to, to build out.
So Counsel Jolly, um, first phase of work is the technical analysis. Um, once we understand what work is required, uh, then we would do it in phases. Um, we were doing it in phases as well, just to not, um, impact as much, um, on the public at one time, as well as, um, just to spread out the funding for it.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the pickleball noise study. So Mr. Scoble at the beginning said that everything in this, this proposed budget is kind of very top priority. So I'm curious to know how the pickleball noise study got to be a top priority when council kind of rejected putting in $100,000 worth of infra, infrastructure for this. Like, why, uh, how did this make it to the top?
Kevin, do you want me to respond to that? Um, so actually that, the, the noise study, um, one, as well as, those are both operating business cases, I believe, or one's a capital charter. Um, those were actually requested by council. So those are actually not part of the proposed budget. They're not included in what we're recommending for funding. So if council wants to, we were asked to bring forward those charters and those business cases. And so if a member of council wishes to bring one of those forwards, one of those forward, it would require a motion.
Okay, that's unfunded right now.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Um, and then my last question, this is probably going to come up with, uh, Mayor Heron's motion about FCS funding. How much over, um, the minimum required funding have we been topping up that, that?
I think it's going to save us about 300,000.
So if I can answer that question, thank you through Madam Mayor. So for the individual and family supports, uh, program, which was the, the request, um, through the PBB process, it's about 280,000, um, and we get about 20,000 in revenue that we would, uh, lose, um, that, um, that is part of that. So the other, the other program, so we've got a couple of program areas. We reduce that budget by about 100,000. So we, we might be about 80,000 over, um, the 20% contribution. So overall, finance tells me we regularly over contribute above the 20%, about 17 to 18% over what we are required.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
You got free of the pickleball question. Counsel Hughes? Counselor Hughes. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I had barking dogs all of a sudden. It always happens at the right time, right? So just, I, I just want a general clarification. So we go through this budget, we have the funded operating and then the recommended operating isn't funded. And then, but the capital projects that are recommended are funded. And then there's the unfunded. Is that how it works in this binder? I just want to make sure I understand. So I'm not saying to unfund things that are already unfunded and just making myself a lot more work.
Right. So the, so on the operating business cases, the two that are shown at the bottom, the social housing coordinator and the Alpine Park Pickleball Court sound study are not funded. We were requested to bring those forward as part of the budget package, but it's up to council to move them. And then there is also a capital project. So again, on the capital list that you actually see in our binder, we have a funded and an unfunded, which is clean. But there's one.
Unfunded.
Sorry, or recommended funded, funded or recommended is the, is means the same thing.
Okay, but for operating, recommended means unfunded, right? So it's a different, it means, because we.
Right, sorry, you're right. Yes, we use the word recommend counsel. For council consideration, those last two operating business cases would require a motion. And then I will just also share, because we missed it in the package, is that there is also a capital charter related to that youth transitional housing that we were asked to bring forward. It didn't make it into the package, but it is now on the council website. And that one as well would require council motion to bring that forward.
Okay, so recommended means different things between operating and capital. Okay, I got it. Okay, that's helpful. So I just, like I said, I, I was thinking it was something different just because I recommended twice. So that is fine. And then. Diane, about the sound barrier project. The, do we have any idea how much it would cost if we took an average of two days as opposed to one? And then compiled the report. I'm just, if we were to do it, I would rather just not have it, have a debate over just having it be one day. Do you know what I'm saying? How much more would it be if we had to do two? Would you know?
So we didn't ask specifically for an additional day of testing. However, did do extensive conversations with engineering firms around acoustical testing and sound testing. And they, they're very experienced in this work. And it was their recommendation, they submitted a proposal in terms of how they would do this work and what they would provide back to us. So in reviewing the proposal, we were pretty confident in the work that they were going to provide, that it would provide some good, solid information around the sound and the sound barrier and impact on it based on the proposal they provided.
Okay, so they're confident that the results they can get would require a second day.
Right, and they have done this study in the past and we're quite confident that, again, they could do this work based on the $10,000.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor McKay.
We keep running this flag up the flagpole here. Is this part of Pejhanen? Is that what it is? Part of the two additional flagpoles?
It's, it's part of the recommendations of Pejhanen and also part of the CO policy on, on flagpoles is to have those flags.
We can't find $12,700 internally?
We probably can. It was recommended we bring this back through budget, so.
So I mean, would there be a significant, I'm trying to, I was just looking out front where the existing, it's meant for St. Albert Place. So the existing flagpoles are on a base. Is there enough room for them? Would we have to do some modification to the building? And then do we have to then have historical society involved with it?
It, it's my understanding that when this was looked at last year and for the 2020 budget, all that was considered. And that was the price to do the two, the two poles installed.
Like, just not the purchase of the poles and the installation?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks. The other one is on the community amenity site planning. I mean, it's recommended $500,000 splitting it over because it's a $1 million project. Is it possible to do it for a little bit less and then spread it out a little longer? Because I mean, we're going to be a few years away before we have anything on that site. I mean, we had the discussion yesterday around, I know the, I know the need for it. I know the need to determine around what, what do we put where and how does it fit? But, I mean, $500,000 in the first year, I mean, is that just, is that just to split it in half? Or is there some previous work done in relation to that's what it's going to be in relation to year one? Or can you explain to me how that business case was developed?
I'll, I'll refer to Diane Inger for further clarification. In 2021, the lower mouth will be requested in 2022. You can, you know, there's always this ability to spread these, these charges out. It just that sometimes you get more bang for your buck and those synergies that happen within that one year. But I'll have Diane Inger, she's more familiar with it.
Thanks, Carrie. So we did re-scope this project charter for 21. So what we've done is for 21, we put $500,000 in, which can be done as a separate project in itself. It is the identification of facility components and the site concept planning and some high level costing. So we can bring that back to council. You can see what that looks like. And then the next part of the charter is another year of funding, which is the $1 million. That's the technical work. So once we know what we want to build and where we want to build it, then we, we go into the geotech, the transportation studies and all the technical studies that have to happen. So these are two separate, they can be two separate projects. Prove the $500,000 this year and then bring something back to council. And we can look at what 22 could look at based on the work we've done with the 21 project.
How much danger would we be in if we just pushed this off a year? I mean, are we, I mean, we're, we're, we're years away realistically wise around a community amenity site. Or is there any risk delaying it another year?
I can start out and then I'll hand it over to Kevin or Carrie to speak to as well. So from a recreation and parks perspective, we are looking at, we have had demand for recreation facilities as well as other community amenities for that site. Just because we planned for what we would want there and how we would cite it, doesn't mean we have to build it right away. But the planning is really important to help us understand what the priorities are and what the needs are, what the costs are going to be. And the better plan we have and information we have, the better we can plan moving forward. As well as we continue to get pressure from the community in terms of wanting some amenities. And if we haven't started the planning, we could run the risk of potentially having projects in front of us before we have the bigger plan for the site. It is really important to know which, which, I guess, amenities are going to go in which area. I guess, as an important part of our long-term planning.
Go ahead. And thank you. And just further to what Ms. Inger was, was discussing is that this even looks beyond, even with the recreation. It's the school site and that placement or citing of those amenities is very important. Because you cite something wrong and you can add, you know, a significant cost in, in servicing to the site or not even be able to do a certain servicing because of how something is structured on a, on a, on a plot of land. So it's, it's critical.
So part of the work that we're doing in relation or proposed work around servicing that site. I mean, we just have to, it wouldn't necessarily depend on where that, that site is accessed from. I mean, this doesn't include that. I mean, that's all part of the existing project that's already going forward around servicing, correct?
Yeah, right. So, so the project that was before council last night is for the, the offsites, right? So kind of to the property line, so to speak. And of course, it serves other functions besides just that site. So this is, you know, the onsite is more about engineering. This is more about the planning and, and as Ms. Inger and Carrie have talked about. But it's also what else goes on the site? Is it, you know, are we looking at not only just the community amenities, are we looking at a school site? That sort of thing. And then kind of moving the pieces around on the puzzle to see what's going to work best?
Fair enough, but it doesn't matter where the pipe comes into this site as long as, depending on, I mean, it doesn't depend on where, if you have a swimming pool closer to where your site access is versus a school, that doesn't matter. I mean, those are all part of the planning that goes on once we determine the placements, right? We, maybe I'm not asking, we just get it to the gate and then wherever it develops, doesn't matter. You know, that's all part of the planning, right? Is that?
Yeah, it's, but they, they are interlinked. I mean, if, if, if you require 100 meters of pipe and access road onsite or you require 200 meters of road and access pipe, then your, your onsite piping has just gone up twice, right? So there's a little bit of that, too. And, and again, getting that optimal mix on the site and what's most economical overall.
Well, yeah, I guess that's what I was asking, whether we drop, drop the pipe on the south side of the project or we drop the pipe on the west side of the project or we drop the pipe on the east side. That's kind of what I was trying to get to.
That's a good way to put it, for sure.
Okay, Counselor Hughes or Jolly, do you have any more questions? Where, West, you go, okay. I got a couple more. First of all, Diane, I appreciate the thought about keeping Grosvenor Pool shut, but I'm not pushing that one forward. I think we're going to need the pool. And then, the other one I had a question about was you had a suggestion on for new revenue was to generate revenue by charging a fee to schools to city facilities for sports academies. Right now, that's covered under the joint use agreement that we don't charge. Are we getting access to the schools right now?
Thanks for that question, Mayor Heron. So it is always harder when we're looking at service reduction. So there are always pros and cons and it is important to have all the information. So with regard to reciprocal use, currently, sport academies are provided access into recreation facilities at no cost. And in reciprocation, the community has access to the schools. So the, the community access is about 11,000 hours in schools and the schools access about 4,000 hours in city facilities. However, of the hours that the schools access in city facilities, about 25% of that comes from sport academies, which has been a good use of utilization in our facilities and it's been a very positive partnership. However, it, you know, when we're looking at costs, this is just one opportunity that was brought forward as a suggestion that there could be an opportunity there, however, because in the region, many of the other municipalities do charge sport academies for access to their facilities because it is not necessarily always a part of, it's not always interpreted as part of the curriculum. Students pay extra for sport academy program. And so in other municipalities, they have looked at that as an opportunity to, I guess, charge back to those programs for access to facilities. On the flip side, they are accessing facilities during the day when we are not as busy. So it is increasing utilization. It is an actual social benefit to our community to be able to provide these opportunities. So there definitely are pros and cons on both sides of this.
Yeah, no, I was going to ask you if we're losing revenue from other opportunities because we're giving it free to the sports groups and you're kind of saying no?
I would say overall, we're not losing a lot of opportunity at all. Because again, it is during the day when, when facilities are quieter.
Is there like a, a business case on this one?
Yes, there is a SLA on this.
Does it talk about what other municipalities are doing?
I was reviewing it. I don't think we mentioned in, well, we did mention, I think that there was a. We did, we did do a study based on 2020 survey of nine municipal comparators. Half of the respondents did not include sport academies as a component of a reciprocal use agreement. So that means they weren't even, I guess, they didn't honor sport academies through reciprocal use. Another respondent said did include sport academies, one third of them did include some form of fee to sport academies. So again, that's comparators within the region. However, locally within St. Albert, we have never charged for sport academies. And we have had the conversation with the school districts and they feel that it is important to their, their program offering. Again, it was just an opportunity for some new revenue. But again, there are definitely pros and cons to this.
Yeah, there are. Okay. It's so, so Kevin sent us an email, I think on Friday with a summary. But if you go into the budget thing on our council member site, there's a 55-page summary of all the proposed service level adjustments, it's called. Yeah, that's where all my motions came from on Sunday. They weren't out of left field. Might have seemed like it. Okay, Diane, I need you again. Diane Inger, so I have this little note from like last year's budget. It says, "Look for service place operating budget to decrease by $27,000 due to heat recovery system." So we paid, we, I think we did a couple of project on heat recovery. Do you know if it affected our operating at all? You're muted.
Sorry about that. So I can look into the specifics around that. I think it will take a couple of years to actually see the effects of that. But I would say overall, our utility costs have actually gone up in 21. They've gone up $134,000 as a whole. So as we look at utilities as a whole, and that's just the cost to, to buy the utility. So I could dig deeper and do the analysis in terms of any savings on the heat recovery and what that might have, what that's come out to. However, overall, what we're seeing in 21 is an increase in utilities.
And Diane, you probably don't have to do that. Maybe, maybe Mr. Scoble, it's something for the utilities department to look into. Because when these capital projects come to us, there's generally a benefit in our ongoing operating. And if there's no benefit, then it's hard to justify.
Yeah, we'll take that away. I mean, it's really what we need to look is at the demand of consumption more so than the actual pricing with the fluctuation. So we'll, we'll ask our environment group to take a look at that.
Thanks. Diane, does the funding for Fire and Ice come out of rec or do we, does that go to the fire department? Do you know? Does anyone know?
The funding comes out of the event grant.
The event grant for Fire and Ice?
Right, so we do fund the Fire and Ice event through that event grant program annually.
Okay, do you know if it's happening in 2021?
So staff have been working really closely with all of the event organizers and talking about what 21 would look like. Right now, what we understand is it's probably very difficult for Fire and Ice to offer their event in February based on the current restrictions, some provincial guidelines. We are looking with all of our events in terms of what can be modified for 21, but there's nothing firm yet in terms of what events might look like next year.
Okay, I'm going to just, I'm going to ask you about that again in the future because the recovery task force is really pushing us to do more community building. And when you can do it outside, I think that's, that's the best for COVID. And so I might ask that again. You might have noticed that I put the Halloween haunt back into the budget for 21. I'm just wondering why. It's, it's a year away. Are we just assuming we're not going to be able to run an event because of COVID in a year?
Correct. We looked at 21 and tried to look at what was reasonable and feasible and try and maximize our utilization and balance fiscal responsibility. So we looked at Halloween haunt and it's a very popular event. We could have up to 4,000 visitors to that event. And we just felt with the guidelines that are in place now, we probably won't have mass gatherings by next fall. So we did remove it from the budget. However, if council wanted to see that event and even if there were still restrictions, we could look at, see how we would be able to modify that event to still try to provide something.
Okay, well, I'm going to push for it because I think it's, can't cancel everything. And then the last one is, do you know if we're doing the New Year's fireworks this year in 2020?
We are working really hard to find a modified program delivery. So I'm meeting with staff this week to determine, you know, what it looks like we could be able to provide this year. And then hopefully, we did leave it in next year's budget as well. We're hoping by next New Year's Eve, we'll still be able, we'll have some changes in our provincial guidelines and restrictions. But we are looking to try and provide some kind of a modified program for this year. We will bring that through the EOC in the next few weeks.
I have a question about, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kevin.
I'm sorry, when you're done, but I just had an update from Kate. So the, the heat recovery project that services design, but it's not actually installed. So it's going to be installed in 2021.
Let's keep this note for another year. A random sticky note. I had a question about Dig In. That's an event, but Diane doesn't organize. And I noticed on our, we have no economic development scheduled on today or tomorrow, on Thursday. When do we ask act dev questions?
Well, technically, that is today. It's under the general government and my office.
Okay. I didn't really prepare for act dev questions, but, so can we maybe ask a little bit more on Thursday?
Sure, we'll, we'll make sure, we'll talk to Sean and him or one of his folks will be handy if we need to.
Okay.
Sean is on today.
I saw that and I said, ask questions about Dig, Dig and Dining Week and Business Breakfast. But Sean, I don't know what I'm asking you yet. So can you come back on Thursday? Sorry. Is there anyone who could answer a question about, is Paul around, about the historical conservation program? Would that be? Is there a BIR? Where is it? Okay, I just, so we've got 65,000 in, in the program, right, Paul?
Correct, yes.
Is it in the budget for 21?
Yes, I believe it still is in the budget for 21.
Okay, so that's a potential motion to, to take that out because we're not using it.
Okay.
Okay, I might make that motion right away. But if there's a BIR, I'll look at that first. Okay. I'm done. Anyone else? Council Broadhead?
Well, I got some follow-up questions on that reciprocal use thing. I, I did read what got sent out, by the way. Yeah, I didn't know there was a business case that supported that particular thing with all of the information that was attached to it. My question around that is if there is experience where schools have been involved in reciprocal use agreements, and then we start charging, and that's happening in other municipalities, what, what, what were the outcomes? Was, was there cost back? Was there pushback from the schools then, when the municipality started charging?
Council Broadhead, I believe in most cases, municipalities, this has been a historical practice for them, that they've done this for, for, for a long time. So they didn't provide us any details in terms of if there was any concern from the schools. I would say, though, from a St. Albert perspective, I know that it would be a concern to our school districts, especially in a time of COVID, when they're, they also are having challenges with their budgets. More, more or less, it would probably be a cost back to the user. But within other municipalities, I think it's been historic, so they haven't had a lot of pushback.
But, but there's no business case put together about the impacts of if, if we did this? I mean, how, how many people would be talking about, how many, how many students would be impacted by this?
There is a high-level service level adjustment business case that's in the folder, which has some of the details. If there's any additional details that you'd like us provide, in terms of number of students that are currently in the academies, those kinds of things, we can provide additional detail.
All right, I'll look at it. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, is that all for for Diane? Seeing no one at home, no one here. All right, let's go on to the next one, which is emergency services. Are you doing this one, Kerry?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I noticed in the org chart, you know, there's Kevin, and he's got act dev and GR, and then everything else is yours, Kerry.
That is, that's the wonder of being a DCL. That's all good. To your worship, members of council, I am pleased to present the emergency services plan and budget for you today. Emergency Services Function Area provides external services in the area of fire and policing. The function is response for delivery of essential programs and services that ensure the overall safety and security of our residents. This presentation focuses on city emergency services only. This slide shows the overall impact for the '21 projected budget as compared to the 2020 revised budget. The impact is an increase of $647,000, is mainly due to revenues. An increase in licensing and permits due to increased volume in dog licenses, $74,000. Expenses, an increase in salary and wages due to salary annualization, $371,000. An increase in purchases from other governments due to an increase in the per-member rate in RCMP contract, $309,000. A decrease in materials, goods, supplies, and utilities due to a decrease in uniform purchases in 2021 and the 11 new hires in 2020, $107,000. An increase in other expenditures due to equipment changes for emergency service vehicles, $142,000. Emergency Services are proposing two business cases geared towards the maintenance of service levels. The protected, no, the, the proposed business case to hire six emergency service personnel for $682,000 ensures service levels are adequate when Fire Station 4 is opened in 2023. The budget request also includes hiring one training officer position to ensure all duties related to fire EMS training have proper oversight. Further, a key lockbox system, the fire service inspects all properties that have fire protection systems that send signals to the fire department. The current lockbox system has become outdated and needs to be addressed, $47,800. In summary, for 2021, Emergency Services is proposing an overall net increase of $647,000 over 2020. Key influencers are primarily related to an increased dog license revenue, salary annualization, and increase per-member rate in all, in the RCMP contract. This concludes the Emergency Services presentation. Thank you.
All right, Council McKay.
Last year, we had a request from the RCMP. They asked for two additional members. Was that asked for again this year and just didn't make it through the prioritization matrix or?
I will start the, the answer, and then I can turn it over to, to Baron or to Aaron. It's my understanding that when they discussed, the RCMP decided not to proceed with additional officers due to the financial constraints.
Yes, Council McKay, that's, that's correct. There was some conversation on that. The, the recognition of the financial impacts that was happening across the world, as well as the fact that we have a, the RCMP has an authorized strength of 70 members right now, and they are currently sitting at around 61 members as far as actual members serving the detachment. So there's a little bit of room in there for them to increase it if they need to.
While I have you, I, I know every, for the last three years, we've had the Maloney Front Counter security modifications on there, and that's, and it says in the back, or it says in the business case that that's due to mandatory RCMP security. Like, are we at a risk here by not moving something like that forward? I know maybe one year we could push it off, but this has been three years in a row now.
Yeah, we, we've had the conversation with the detachment commander and headquarters on this. There, there is some risk, but they all, the RCMP also recognizes that we're going through some accommodation studies right now. And they, they've, you know, in support of us not doing renovations until we decide where it makes sense for the police to be accommodated in the future. And that report is due to come back to administration. We, it's, it's a little bit behind right now, and we're hoping to have that completed in quarter one of next year, which can then help drive some of those decisions. And I think we'll have a clearer line in sight as to the needs for that front counter security. There were some minor modifications that were made that satisfied the RCMP in the short term.
So is there any need to keep putting it on there then, is, or is it just something to stay on there until we get the report? I was just curious as to if, if we're developing workarounds or other solutions, do we need to have it on? I know it's on the unfunded, not recommended, but I'm just curious as to why we keep seeing.
I think it was more or less to keep it there as a placeholder and then amalgamate when other decisions are made regarding, you know, whether or not the police stay at Maloney Place or, or there's a new home for them.
How are, like, your staffing at MES, how are we doing with that? Are we, are we keeping up, or are there's ongoing impacts? I mean, we've been polled with AHS, we got polled with COVID and the bylaw. How are we doing for staffing at MES? I guess, I mean, and I realize that this is, I'm asking your opinion, but are we okay, is what I'm basically saying?
Yeah, I, I think so. You know, a, a lot of it goes down to what council's desires are and what they're hearing from the community as far as, you know, how much proactive work council and the community want municipal enforcement to do. I'm confident that we have the numbers of officers to address the complaints that are coming in on a reactive model. Where I think we get into, and as law enforcement in general, as you know, where we get into service levels is, is that discretionary one around how much, how much time do we want officers doing proactive work? So if we, if we want officers doing more proactive traffic enforcement or focusing on other bylaws and other areas, then increasing officers tends to, tends to help with do that. Now, there's other ways that we can accomplish that through other efficiencies and things like that, which I believe we're gonna be looking at into 2021 as well, through some internal reviews, which may help increase that as well.
Or, or, and me, I don't know, I don't think the detachment commander's here. How is our crime rate, I mean, in the last quarter, are we seeing a spike in, in crime or in certain types of disorder crime?
It's probably a question that we should take as a BIR and have the detachment commander answer more formally. What I can tell you is, is that Crime Severity Indexes was just released within the last week, and we've seen a slight increase in our Crime Severity Index, and we, we do have some numbers that can be shared in relation to trending in Alberta and in St. Albert, but probably best in a BIR.
Thanks, Aaron. Chief, in relation to the six members and, and the, the timing, it's just tied in LinkedIn to the last year's ask of the 10 members. Where are we? Are we hired all those 10, and they're trained, and they're there, or is, where are they in that whole process?
Thanks for the question. Yes, we, we hired all 10. What we had to do this year for several reasons was split up the cohorts. So as of right now, we have six of the new ES fire medics trained, and the four are in their training right now. And we're hoping to get them done soon.
So last year, one of the big drivers was our overtime costs, particularly in the fire department. How are we doing this year? And I realize that because of COVID, that might have an impact too, but are part of the rationale to increase our staffing was around our overtime costs? Have we seen the correlation then?
Well, the overtime is down, it is down from last year. It's not where we want it to be yet, and the main reason is because of the fact that there's always a delay. And when we hired these people at the beginning of the year, we have to put them through the training to actually get them functional on the floor. And then we can see the impact from that. So hopefully, you know, by the end of the year, when everybody's on the floor, fully functional, we should see some, some better numbers with the overtime. Like you said, it is down from where it was before. You kind of nailed the head, hit the nail right on the head with the COVID. Because of what's happening there. We've done very well in that area with regards to keeping that virus out of the fire halls, but there still is an effect with, when it comes to overtime.
All right, I, I think that's all my questions, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Council Hanson.
Thank you. Actually, mine is just really a matter of interest. Aaron, $74,000 increase due to dog licenses and permits. Is there a run on dogs, or is this a usual thing, or is it COVID, or do you have any idea?
So, so yeah, I could just add some clarity to that. So I think the 74,000 number was the totality of revenue for permits and licensing across the whole department. So there was a portion of that in fire services, I believe, as well. But there was an increase in, in dog licensing that we seen, and I think the result was we did a door-to-door canvassing campaign last year, which picked up some of those numbers. We caught a lot of people who didn't have licenses, so now they're on, in the system. And then we also, I believe COVID did have an impact, so we also saw an increase in, in the purchasing of, of dogs through COVID, and I think that also increased our licensing.
Is this, is this a big jump, or a blip, or do you think it'll carry on?
I think historically speaking, what happens with dog licenses is we, we see it a small trend upwards, and then we see little blips, and then it starts to go back down. And then when we do our dog licensing canvassing, it goes back up again, and then it starts to slowly down. But it's a, but it's a trend that slowly creeps up with these little waves. So I think we're at that peak, and then we're gonna start to see it maybe level down a little bit, but then continue up, if that makes sense.
And so how often are you, would you be doing these canvassing, door-to-door canvassing?
We plan on doing them about once every five years.
Okay, thanks.
If, if I could also just add, I just had a, a follow-up for Councilor McKay on that BIR for photo enforcement. So I was able to look at the number, and our projected revenue for fine for photo enforcement next year is 2.1 million.
What was it last year or this year? I, I, I know we're not done the year, but approximately.
For 2020, it's 2.1 million as well. In 2019, our actual revenue was 2.8 million. What our forecast for 2020 is, is about 1.6 million. So we believe this year is a, is one of those blips that have had a negative impact. But I think, you know, going into next year, we're, we're projecting that it'll be similar to what we thought was gonna happen in 2020.
Thank you. I, I put the BIR in, but thanks a lot anyways.
Okay. Council Jolly, anything from home? Council Hughes, sorry, finger, go up, go ahead.
Okay, so just, so we have, Fire Hall is being built. We're, we're stacking up the, the stock, the stock of people right now, so we don't have a huge onslaught of hiring the year that it comes out. Are we still going to expect that what we're hiring for now will not result in a large surprise for the next council, you know, like a, you know, because we're doing like a six or seven a year, right? So in theory, within four years, we should pretty much be ready to go when it comes to open. Are we still expecting that number to be consistent, and we're not gonna have a surprise massive hiring because of the overtime, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, that's correct. So what we did this year, instead of stretching it over two more years, we decided to stretch it over three years. So this year, we're asking for six, the five and the one, and then next year would be seven, and then eight, as opposed to, we had 11, 11, and 10. So the plan is when Station 4 is open, we will have everybody in play.
Okay, and so it's, it's the six, seven, eights, how we're doing it right now, is the intention?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, and, and the fire truck, we delayed the purchase of it by a year because of COVID, right?
That's right. So there's a delay with one of the engines and the aerial as well. And, um, yeah, they both were delayed by year.
But are they gonna be available for the opening, or are we gonna be going without them for a bit?
Oh, the new engine should be, it's in the books for 2022 right now. The tanker is gonna be for 2021, and that's been okayed. And the aerial will be the same year as Station 4 is built, so 2023.
Okay.
Everything should be in place that year.
Everything should be good, okay. And I, I believe this was touched on, but the overtime, I just want to go over it one more time. Because when we have to, we hire all these people, then we don't have extra people to handle the overtime, basically, because they'll all be going to a new spot. So are we seeing more, like, has the overtime gone down? I guess. I don't remember, someone asked, or not, please forgive me, but has it gone down or has it not gone down since we've done all this hiring?
The overtime has gone down. It hasn't gone down as much as it would or will once all these new hires are trained and on the floor. Once again, the, the main issue is by the time these people are trained, it takes, it'll take the whole year, and then we had an officer class come through. And when that happens, it depletes people from the floor as well. So the benefit of these hires right now, we should see the benefit next year for sure.
I, I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, any more questions from chambers? I see none. All right, so go ahead, Kerry.
Yep. Prior to, to going into, before we have the Arts and Heritage Foundation, I just wanted to do a correction from the Community Services budget. Is that the, the historic conservation budget of $65,000 was already removed from the '21 budget, so it's not there, so.
Killing my mojo, Kerry.
Yeah, I just had to say it.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, so council, just so you know, we had scheduled at 5:00 and 5:30 the library and arts and heritage. We've actually asked Arts and Heritage come at 4:00. And just because we knew we might not be this late, the library board unfortunately couldn't be here till 5:00, so here's the plan. Take 15 minutes now, and then we'll be back in our chairs for pardon? They are here. They're here right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we do Arts and Heritage now? And then we'll take a break till 5:00. Okay. All right. Who's here from Arts and Heritage?
Anne, could you just?
Anne's here. Just you Anne or is your board chair here? You're muted.
We're just getting our board treasurer set up. We'll be with you in a couple of minutes.
Sure. Why don't we take five minutes while you guys get organized? No rush, because we've got lots of time. So let's take five minutes and quarter to, so be back in your chairs at 10:00.
Oh, my worry is. I'm sort of talking over them.
Suzanne, we can hear you.
Maybe we should.
Does anyone know where Jackie went? Did she? Well, 3:51, she should be back any second. Yeah, if you see her, Carrie, that'd be great, because we're going to get going. Natalie and Sheena are right on it, waiting to go. All right. Anne, where'd you go? I've got a PowerPoint up. Anne, are you there? I see Suzanne. I saw Anne unmute herself. There we go. There she is. All right. Is this a tag team presentation or is Suzanne just here for questions? How's it working?
Suzanne is going to do our presentation and I'm here for questions. So I'm going to hand it over to Suzanne.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Suzanne Richford and I'm the treasurer for the Board of Trustees for the.
Did we lose her?
Sorry, we're not sure why it's giving it back to us. Maybe Anne can help here. No, I am here, but I don't know what happened.
So is it just the PowerPoint started advancing or what's the problem?
Okay, can we hear?
Yep.
Okay. Good. I think, I think we fixed it. I'm so sorry. Again, I'm Suzanne Richford, treasurer on the Board of Trustees for the Arts and Heritage Foundation. And. Okay. I'm going to have to use yours. All right. We've switched computers.
Okay.
So hopefully this shall help. I've introduced myself a few times, so I don't think you need to hear that again. So, okay, so we have a very short presentation for you today. I'd like to start off with saying, given the unprecedented times we find ourselves in due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we are presenting our 2021 budget with three potential scenarios. These three scenarios show a decrease in our ask from the city, ranging from 3% to 7%, based on the original 2020 budget presented to council. These three scenarios also show the AHFs, which is of course the Arts and Heritage Foundation, dipping into our reserves, ranging from approximately $10,000 to $31,000. Each of these three scenarios reflect a significant decrease in our earned revenues and other grants. The federal subsidies available in 2020, due to losses in revenues and businesses, nonprofit organizations and registered charities, primarily as it relates to wages and benefits and rent, reduced our 2020 operational budget. At the time this budget was prepared, these subsidies were not expected to extend into 2021. The federal government has recently announced that the wage subsidy program is expected to be extended to June of 2021. However, no details have been given as to eligibility criteria or the percentage of wages expected to be covered. If the AHF is eligible for these subsidies in 2021, we will most definitely be applying for them to reduce our 2021 operational costs. We are continuing to develop and offer alternative delivery methods of programming for schools and community programming. For 2021, we have committed to not filling current staff vacancy vacancies until our earned revenues recover. We have also committed to using salaried staff for the majority, if not all, programming needs, thus reducing our programming expenses for contract instructors. We also expect supply expenditures to be lower in response to the expected decreased revenues. We are utilizing internal capacity first. Scenarios one and two have an overall reduction in revenues of 19%. And scenario three has an overall reduction in revenues of 22%, all from the 2020 original budget. At this time, we are predicting that we will fall in scenario two and ask the council approve funding under this scenario. So highlights of scenario two are asked from the city under scenario two is 1,702,991. So approximately 1, 1.7, just over 1.7 million, which is a 5% decrease from the original 2020 budget presented to council. And it also is a 19% reduction in our overall revenues from the 2020 budget. This scenario also shows reductions in other grants of 29% and a 68% decrease in earned revenues from the original 2020 budget. As of September 30th, our earned revenues are down 59% from the original 2020 budget. And keep in mind that we were fully operational in January, from January 1st to March 31st, 2020. This scenario also shows a decrease in wages, benefits and contracted services of 255,000, or 14% from the original 2020 budget. Under this scenario, we are anticipating dipping into our reserves in the amount of $10,000. If city funding or other funding revenues do not come in as predicted, we will need to review, adjust staffing and/or dip further into reserves. Thank you for listening and now we will take questions.
All right. So the slides weren't advancing, but counsel all got a copy of your presentation. Did you guys all get that? Okay. All right. So questions? Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. So the three different scenarios, can you just run it over really quickly again? What's the different level? How, I understand you're going in scenario two, but what are the assumptions in the three different scenarios?
And maybe can you unshare the screen? That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. So the differences in the scenarios is is basically scenario one is. Is what? What do we do in scenario one? Sorry, just conferring.
Sorry, scenario one, what we're doing with that, we're showing a 7% decrease. And then we're showing a, what we predict our, our revenue is going to be. Scenario two is the most, what we believe at this point, the most likely scenario for our earned revenue. And then in scenario three, it's a sort of worst case scenario, which is why we're sort of predicting that we should fall somewhere in scenario two.
Okay. So we just got this this afternoon, so please forgive me, but I haven't had a chance to really go over these, the, the slides or anything. So under scenario two, obviously that's what you said was a probable. So you said scenario one, it's a 7% decrease. And then the scenario two, the revenues over expenses are actually less than scenario, I mean scenario three, it's scenario two and three are less for excess revenues over expenses. So I'm just, you just need to break this down to me like I'm four right now, just because I just haven't seen these numbers before, like I haven't seen this before, right? So.
Okay. So what we, what we did was we looked at the probability of our revenues coming back. And then we tried, we tried to simplify it. So in many ways, you could have scenario one, A, B and C, two, A, B and C, three, A, B and C. So we basically tried to sort of simplify it. So we went for scenario two. So one of the differences you're going to see is going to see program and site administration coming back at different levels and other grants coming back at different levels. Donations and fundraising and our sort of retail areas coming back at different levels. And that's one of the reasons you see the fluctuation. So one of the things we would like to point out is the reduction we're asking from the city is only one of the decreases we will be facing in 2021. The other decreases we're going to be facing are a decreasing, decrease in revenue, because we are predicting that our programs will not come back anything like 100%.
Got it. So, so the other grants that you're getting with 246,000 under scenario two, because you're, you're actually estimating $100,000 less than what was the budget for this year, right?
Yes. So we've seen a lot of grants that we normally get. We have seen either them eliminated or significantly reduced.
Right. So I, not that it's going to change the number at the end of the day, but how confident are you that you can even get the 246,000 right now?
We believe at this point, we prepared this budget in August and early September. It's actually pretty true. We are running at about 20% of, at the moment. We believe that with the bookings and things we're seeing, we believe that that it's still the most likely scenario.
Okay. Father Lacom Chapel, is that, that money must be for grant money, right?
That we have a service agreement with the province of Alberta. This year, the chapel, as did the other northern sites, it did not open. So what you're seeing on that line is in scenario one, you're seeing it come back. Scenario two, you're seeing it come back, but you're seeing it come back with fewer hours. And scenario three is the chapel doesn't open. And so, and you're also seeing a decrease in the expense for that as well. We simply don't know what's going to happen to the province's provincial sites at this point.
Yeah, I hear you. So under expenses for projects, can just what, what, what does that mean? What, what projects were you hoping to do under expenses?
Some of the projects, those, some of those are related to grants.
Okay. Like I'm just wondering, are there any, are there projects like any refurbishments that you're planning to do?
Not that you. They're most, they're most related to sort of contract type work. If we get the grant, then we can employ a, a contract person to come in and do some of that work. So a museum assistance program, for example, is one project.
Okay. Are there, are there any refurbishment plans that you have that are coming up for the next year, I guess? Just to, just so that we aren't surprised. Because you know how before we had the painting of the green elevators and then we had a different painting of a different elevator? Is there anything else that you are hoping to also do?
No, we've included all our repairs and maintenance. We've included that in the three different scenarios. And it's 81,000 to 70,000.
Okay. So you're looking at a decrease of almost $100,000 from, from this year. This year's budget.
Right.
Okay. And the majority of it, when I look at it, is it's coming from staffing, it looks like, which is really a lot of our cost. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, if we don't have, if we don't have the same number of community and educational programs, we reduce our staff accordingly.
Okay. All right. I think I've got a clear picture here. Thank you very much. If it's possible next year or for the next council, if, if it's possible to send this out the day before, then it might, it's just, it's just really helpful so that we don't have to go through it the day of. I know that both you and the. I know that both you and the library tend to drop it off at the time of, but if, if you could send an email the day before, it would probably just help us just so that we're may have fewer questions, I guess. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
But that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hughes. Good questions. I guess the question I have, and I might have missed it, which scenario do you have in the budget?
Number two.
Number two is in the budget already?
Yes, I'll have Diane McMordey address that.
Yes, I believe scenario two is the one where it was just, just over one point seven million, like one seven zero three. That's what we have included in the budget.
It's hard to find, I Google, I just put in Arts and Heritage Foundation and searched, it's nowhere to be found. So it's hard for council to see that, same with library. So maybe next year we have that identified. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. And thank you to the Arts and Heritage for putting together three different scenarios for us to look at. I think it's really helpful. I'm on page five of six of your, your slide deck and I think it might have been addressed with Counselor Hughes, but in scenario three, exhibition and collection supplies and expenses, it's showing nothing. So what are we losing there? We're losing, it sounds like the chapel exhibition and what else are we losing in that line?
Well, Counselor Hanson, on slide five is actually a slide which just shows how we're using city, city operating funding. We're still actually planning on using our own fundraising, our own dollars as well in exhibitions. So we are still doing it, it's just that it, we, it's reduced and funding for that.
Okay, I understand. I, I understand. I was thinking that this is how you were going to operate under each scenario, so I understand. Well, then that, that kind of clears things up, I guess. I guess I would say kudos to you to, you know, dip into your reserves, try and handle things internally, no extra hiring, all the things that you have to do, but especially that you've gone outside the box to program online and do something unique and different. And who knows, maybe you will be able to expand your, your education and awareness through online services. I think that has been the opportunity in COVID and you guys have capitalized on that. So great. And I appreciate the presentation this morning or this afternoon.
So, Counselor Jolly, do you have any questions? Okay. I think that's all we have for questions. I think probably that's mainly due to the fact that we just recently had our get together. So we appreciate that time we spent together and I don't think it could have been said any better than what Counselor Hanson said. Thanks for doing your part during these crazy times. And thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
All right. We have fifty minutes. Is there any questions before, like on anything, before we take a bit of a break? On anything?
Process.
Food will be here at four thirty. Go ahead, process.
Mr. Scoble, I think I mentioned this last year, when we're going back and I, I'm looking at our project charters and it's just a processing, is it possible to identify the year? Because I mean, I'm seeing multiple ones that are in our, you know, recommended and then not recommended. Is it possible to add the year that they first were, came like put forward?
Or showed up?
Like, so like for the one I was talking about with the Maloney's upgrades, I think that was like about a twenty seventeen. Is it, is it somewhere possible to put that in there just to give me a date or something? Because sometimes these are showing back up again. And I mean, I'm just thinking in front of it, like you could put, so for the new ones, it would be twenty twenty rec zero five zero or if it was from last year, it would be twenty nineteen. You just, it would just be a process thing for me? Or is that just too burdensome and not available with our current system?
I think that's probably something we could look at incorporating without too much trouble.
I just think it might even be beneficial as we move into like next council and things like that, then they would know that these things have just didn't magically reappear in twenty twenty one or so. It's just something that might be easier.
Yep, fair comment. I think we can look at that.
Okay. I think we can take a bit of a break. We'll be back in our chairs to hear the library presentation at five and then final comments and we're done for the day.
Did you see the new?
Councilor Hughes, are you back? There she is. Okay. Everyone's back. Everyone's in their chairs here. I see Janice online. Looks like you're in a seat or somewhere, Janice.
I am.
Are you?
No, I'm at the library.
All right. So thanks for joining us. Did we get a copy of your financials or your presentation? Oh, Jackie sent it. Okay. Take it away, Janice.
Right. I'm only seeing the blue screen. Hello, I'm Janice Marston, Chair of the St. Albert Public Library Board. With me is Library CEO Peter Bailey. Today, we'll talk about how St. Albert Public Library stepped up in the time of crisis, finding new and changed ways to support the entire community. And we'll talk about how your support of our 2021 budget request will enable the library to continue supporting St. Albertans in 2021 as our community recovers. Like the rest of the community, we've taken some lumps this year. And yet, hard times do show us what's important. We look forward to 2021 with a sense of optimism and excitement. I want to start off with something amazing that happened this year before the world came in. Thanks to your support in 2019, our community opened a brand-new library location in January, the Jensen Lakes Library. It truly was a realization of the dream. We see JLL becoming a crucial part of the growing area in St. Albert in years to come. First, we need to acknowledge the support the city, both council and administration, has given us throughout the pandemic. We've worked closely with the Emergency Operations Center to ensure we're on the same page as the city and their advice and help is as significant. In normal times, we see the impact of the library for our community every day. But the pandemic has been a humbling reminder of the wide range of people who count on their library. When the crisis hit, people turned to the library for help. The minute we closed the library doors on March 15th, we swung into action. We created new and changing ways to serve the community to make sure the community that counted on us could continue to do so. This was a true test of our promise, here for you, here for all. The pandemic required us to pivot dramatically from the in-person service to remote service. We began issuing remote memberships, removing overdue fees and notices, and extending membership renewal dates. We made it simple for all citizens to access library resources. We pivoted to improving digital resources, more eBooks and audiobooks, streaming music and movies, digital learning resources. New and existing library members realized what the library had to offer. Use of library digital resources increased overall 42%. Library staff were on a steep learning curve to deliver new services, and delivered they did. We made a pivot to online programming, with new online programs going live just days after the library closed. There was a strong sense of urgency to support parents and caregivers who were suddenly locked down. There was a new demand from parents suddenly overseeing their children's learning from home. Staff responded with programs that met multiple different needs. We moved our popular summer reading game online. By the end of September, the library had offered hundreds of programs attended by over 14,000 people. This slide is a snapshot of just a few of the programs. There was something for everyone. Most programs were online, but as soon as it was safe, our outreach staff were outside in the community doing pop-up libraries, distance, and self-guided programs. We're proud of the amazing opportunities we put into the community during the pandemic and will continue doing this work throughout 2021. We pivoted online with our annual library festival Starfest, the St. Albert Reader's Festival. Moving Starfest online required mastering another learning curve, but it also created new opportunities. We gained new viewers with people turning in from around North America. This year, we were proud to host number-one bestselling authors such as Desmond Cole, Emily St. John Mandel, and Jesse Thistle. Digital was a great start. Digital was a great start to our pandemic response, but there was a deep hunger in the community for in-person services and physical collections. In response, we launched a brand-new library service, Curbside Pickup. With ample parking and good access, Jensen Lakes Library was the perfect spot for a curbside pickup. Curbside ran throughout June and ended when we reopened the downtown library at the beginning of July. Thank you again for the support of Jensen Lakes Library. It played an important role in the library's safe relaunch. Downtown reopened on July 2nd. Jensen Lakes Library reopened on July 16th. We were one of the first libraries in Alberta to resume full browsing of collections. We opened up services like public computer access and reopened study spaces in September. We knew our community needed their library, and we brought it back to them. We received many messages of support and things. But we proceeded with caution, examining every step with public safety at the top of our minds. From reopening, we encouraged mask use by handing out free masks to anyone who needed one. We opened Jensen Lakes Library with designated hours every day for vulnerable patrons. A top priority has been helping St. Albertans recover financially, including finding jobs. Our Career Resource Center continued online with remote career workshops, and our Resume-to-Do Service returned with consultations in September. Another pandemic priority for learning is support for learning. In September, with the return of in-person education, the library pivoted to focus on support for teachers and educators. We used our Makerspace technology to make selfie buttons for hundreds of teachers. We added new digital resources specifically for educators and students. We moved the annual Rooney &amp; Cooney Reading Show online, reaching 61 classrooms and 1,400 students. And ahead of most Alberta libraries, we made safe study spaces available for students in September. We've talked about how we supported our community through the crisis, but we support the city too. We made a 7% reduction to the city's funding in the 2020 budget, or $313,000. 2021 brings with it a new reality. We understand this. We propose to continue the 7% cut to our budget request of the city in 2021. In 2020, the library's 7% reduction came primarily from these areas: one, temporary layoffs at 60% of staff; two, no hiring of summer students through the cancellation of the traditional summer reading game; and three, a freeze on narrative pieces and salary adjustments. In 2021, the 7% reduction to the library budget comes from the following areas: service level reduction, 20% reduction in opening hours and the result of salary savings; a permanent elimination of two positions, the equivalent of one full-time; cuts to collections budget and other non-personal areas; and four, the use of library reserves to fund some operating costs. Turning to the full budget picture for 2021, one can see that the total library operating budget for 2021 is a 10% drop from 2020. On top of the 7% reduction in city funding, the library saw revenue reduction from other sources. Revenues are down significantly in fines and fees, copying and printing, and sales. We hope for a gradual recovery in these revenues in 2021, but not to normal levels. We propose using funds from the library's stabilization operating reserve to assist with 2021 operating costs. As well, the proposed request of the city does not include an increase for operation of Jensen Lakes Library, holding our line. Finally, we can express our appreciation for the commitment that the city shows in supporting citizens of all ages, needs, and lots of life through your support of the library programs, services, and collections. The work we do to support our community is only possible because of your support. What the pandemic has reminded us is the range of people that the library serves and the range of needs that they have. We're here for people in the good times, and we're certainly here for you in the bad times as well. We're here for the community as it recovers from the crisis in the months ahead, and we're here for the city in doing what we can do in the most efficient and cost-effective way that we can. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Janice and Peter somewhere for joining us. Let's see, Peter. Questions? There's Peter. Counselor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Thanks for coming. I appreciate it. So, when I was looking at the numbers... So, we're looking at... Please give me one second. Can you not do that right now? Nope, not doing it. Thank you. So, when I'm looking at the numbers, Jensen Lakes, what is the visitor statistics?
If you want specific numbers, we'll probably have to come back with them. I can tell you our numbers were picking up significantly prior to the shutdown. We were really only just digging in. And there are wait times, so it's our location where people have to wait outside sometimes because of the numbers. It's a very low number that are allowed in there in order to maintain social distancing. Overall, 50%. So, what do you mean?
Our numbers in general, we're doing about 50% in terms of in-person visits. That's downtown and Jensen Lakes together.
Okay, and so what is Jensen Lakes getting then? Because I look at your hours and like 9 to 3. There's no school kids or university students or anybody who's really gonna have the opportunity to use that library. So, I'm just wondering, what is the plans with this branch?
Yeah, we, as we mentioned in the presentation, we opened up originally with the idea that the Jensen Lakes branch would be for seniors and other compromised health people. So, from 9 to 11.
Right.
It's for that. As other people have noted, we're back in school now, so we are looking at adjusting those hours. So, we'll open later in the morning and closing around supper time.
Okay, so... And what are your hours right now? Like, what's the traffic going at right now with there? Like, how many people are going to Jensen Lakes?
There's a maximum of 15 people. That's what we put capacity at.
Okay.
So, it generally never gets to 15 people. Occasionally, there will be a couple of people waiting in the beginning.
So, how many have... Like, do you have an idea of the numbers that you've had like in the past month? Because you don't have...
I don't have that idea, but I can definitely get that for you.
Okay, yeah, I'll be asking a couple of questions like that. So, and obviously, the virtual, I think the online obviously has picked up. So, I'm gonna have a BIR for just what are your stats, numbers for in-person for both branches? Because that's not included in your presentation. And then also, what is your plans for your hours for Jensen Lakes going forward? Because I'm just trying to figure out what you're doing on that. So, the other thing, so you had, it looks like you have a 13% reduction in budget, but you said you're doing a 20% reduction in hours. And the 13% reduction in budget was from the approved 2020 budget, not from the revised 2020 budget. So, I'm just trying to put those two numbers together, I guess, because I'm seeing, you know, 20% reduction in hours, but the staffing doesn't seem to be correlating with that. So, I wonder if you could expand on that.
So, we are losing a full-time equivalent, which is two part-time people, which would also account for lower salaries, wages, and benefits. And there is no... In our previous budget, we had a built-in, I think that was COLA, was it COLA last year? Yeah, a built-in COLA increase, which we didn't provide. We froze it, and it's definitely not going to do this one.
Okay, I'm just... Okay, so I still look at this, though, that we've had a reduction in hours, but the salaries don't match up to the reduction in hours.
Okay, yes, because... Oh, you mean...
Yeah, like we had a 14% reduction in costs.
So... It doesn't work out exactly that way, because there are certain numbers of people who have to be in running the library at any given time and doing certain services. So, things like our actual IT group can't be cut. So, they stay the same. They're the same whether we are open slightly fewer hours or not. And there are other things that maintain their levels, regardless of whether the frontline employees are present or not.
Okay, right. I think IT is like two people, though. And so, okay, so that was the first question. The second question is, if council had to do an additional cut, how much more could we do?
I think that's probably something that rests with council.
So, I'm just wondering, because I mean, we could put forward a motion to do additional cuts for anybody, and I'm just trying to, is there any more that we can afford to do on this?
I think that's something that we would have to handle as it came from you.
Okay. I have one more thing here. Just give me a second. I'm trying to figure out where my notes went. Oh, the programming. So, a large portion of the statistics for the year-over-year is from programming and also from outreach. So, I'm assuming that the outreach van is not being used right now? Is that correct? It is being used? That's great. So, is it going to schools then, or where, what is the...
It's been going to... So, we send it a lot to... Nevada Place, and they go out to parts as well.
Okay. Okay, so that's still being used. And then the programming, are we planning to start increasing the programming more? Or, because obviously, there's still caps on how many people you're putting into each facility. It was very heavy in programming before. So, is there the intention to bring back that same level of programming, and if so, when?
As it is right now, we're building new programs and trying to interpret the... Sorry. And trying to fit them into the schedule as things come along and as the need arises for them. We're still limited, like, when it comes to bringing something to the school, the districts aren't allowing a lot of in-person visiting or any kind of programs that would be there. So, that would be something that would have to be online. We're beta testing in-person programs coming up in December as well.
Okay.
They'd be smaller, and because some of our space is used right now, so a lot of our programs take place in our large program room downstairs in the library. Right now, we're quarantining books in that space. So, it's full, so that the books can sit a certain amount of time before they're put back onto the shelves.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that's all I have right now. I will be asking for that BIR, and I'm looking for a monthly breakdown of the stats for both facilities, for both in-person and online, so we can get an idea of comparison of how COVID has affected you guys, I guess, from visitor standpoint. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, that's it.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. You know, my comments are really, I just want to commend the library for responding to the issues of COVID. You have still managed to provide services for all ages, for all... People in crisis and people who want to just go in there and get books to read. I mean, people use the library for a lot of different reasons, and not all of them are, you know, easy. It's not walking into an art gallery. It's a service that's provided for everybody, and you've done a tremendous job. For the children, for sure. You've kept everybody safe. The adult programming is stellar, and you've done so much of it online. And kudos to Starfest. I heard nothing but fantastic reviews about Starfest. So, I think you should congratulate yourself on all that you have done during COVID. You've provided a steady service for people who love to use the library, and even for those who don't feel comfortable coming in. So, I just needed to say that I know that you are grappling with balancing your budget with the hours at Jensen Lakes, because if you don't have the funds to keep it open from 9 until 8 at night, well, then you've got to make decisions, and you've got to make decisions on who you can serve. So, those are not easy decisions, and I know that the board has been grappling with all of that. So, all that to say that I think that the library is very important to us as a city. We can't really do without you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Counselor McKay.
Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate it. You look like you're on a stage. You should be singing.
All the world's a stage.
And we're all players. Can we, did we get anything more for grants? I see you got $358.80. Is that their max? The province is not going to look at any further grants?
So, the... Yeah, you're right, Counselor McKay. That's the annual per capita grant in the province. And the previous minister, Minister Madu, is a library fan. So, he worked at Cabinet to ensure public libraries got that annual per capita grant for the tenure of his government. So, we're taking him at his word and the new minister that that $358.800 will be there in 2021. Actually, we just got the check for 2020, the second half of our check. So, we're pretty positive that they'll come through with that.
Okay, good. Yeah, I worry that, I know we're hearing rumors that they're gonna have another potential budget in this, in their, I guess, late winter, early spring, and we don't know what that's gonna hold for us. But none of your employees or none of your programs qualified for any of the federal funding that was available, like through SERB or anything? So, we couldn't take advantage of any of that, correct?
We weren't eligible for any of the wage subsidies at all.
Or laid off employees.
Oh, laid off employees, yes, they were. But the library itself didn't get the top up.
Yeah, so I mean, the library staff that you had to lay off, they qualified for EI and all that. So, but, okay. What are your current limits inside both of your facilities, downtown and like for staff and then customers using, or patrons using the libraries? What can you put in the main library down here and then the Jensen Lakes storefront?
Okay, so we're at 60 for downtown and 15 for Jensen Lakes. And I believe... Staff are on top of that. 60 in the downtown and 15 in Jensen Lakes.
And that includes staff, or that's just patrons?
Staff sit on top of that, and I believe there are two staff at Jensen Lakes. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
All right. Seeing no one on council chambers have any more questions. Counselor Jolly, do you have any questions? Counselor Hughes, you done? All right. I think that wraps it up, Janice and Peter. Thank you, guys, for both attending.
Thank you.
You like the background. Okay, you guys have a great night.
Thank you.
And that also, I think, ends our meeting. Kevin, is there anything we need to...
I think we're good.
All right, so we're not adjourning this meeting. We're just recessing it, sorry, recessing it to Thursday at 2:00 PM. All right, so see you, guys, then.
Mayor Heron, was it on our agenda to read the post-own motions?
Was it? Thank you. What are you talking about? No, any new budget information, question, post-own motions? So, is there any new ones?
Did you send two in today, and then I sent in one today?
Okay, and we don't have to read them into the record?
Okay.
Okay. Did you just send them in? Yep. Right? Okay. Getting these thumbs up from Cheryl. Okay, see you, guys.